Everyone, it is 6:00 PM on January ninth and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like to invite Pastor Jeff Smith with Madison Baptist Church to come to the podium.
Good evening. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we bow before you tonight and we do thank you so much for the day you've given us. I thank you so much that this council and this body gives you the preeminence to call upon you and seek your face first before any decisions or any honors given. And I pray that you bless each member of this council, our mayor, and each city council member, just please bless them and their families. Tonight as they meet, give them great wisdom. Everybody here in attendance, would you just please bless them? And we ask, Father especially, that you would bless our city, that you'd keep your hand of protection upon us, that you would push back the evil, you'd keep the people safe. We do thank you for being a God that answers prayer and that we just thank you for loving us. Thank you for all that the Lord Jesus Christ did for us on the cross. Thank you for raising him from the dead, that he'd give eternal life to all those that believe. Now, we just pray that you would bless and we thank you for everything, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the religious state, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Bartlett?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
There is one small correction that we were able to find on, under Engineering's presentment. Section D Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-three dash zero zero four. The amount here lists two thousand six hundred and that amount should have been three thousand six hundred.
Okay. Is that the only correction?
That's the only correction.
And with that correction, we will approve the agenda with that one correction. I'd like to move for approval of the minutes, Twenty Twenty-two dash twenty-four dash RG.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Ready for the vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes. Presentation awards, Mayor.
All right, I think. Is anybody here? Is Michelle here? We got, not Michelle, but... All right. This is a proclamation for National Mentoring Month and I'll read just a couple of the whereas's where everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend who ignited or defended our potential. Whereas one way to return the favor is mentor a child. Every adult has something to offer, an hour a week can make a big difference in a child's life, and a mentor does not have to change his or her life to change a child's. So, this January has been designated as National Mentoring Month, calling on all adults across America to get involved with a mentoring program. So now therefore, I, Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-three as National Mentoring Month. And I'm glad to give this to you.
Thank you so much.
You betcha. And you want to say just a couple of words?
Just thank you so much on behalf of Big Brother, Big Sister of the Tennessee Valley for just being so supportive. And if you know any good men available, we need our bigs, we need men in particular. We have a lot of young men on the waiting list, so if you're available, we have that one hour, you can make a big difference in the life of a child. Thank you so much.
Our second presentation has requested to postpone until February thirteenth, so we will award the Arbor Day Contest winners on February thirteenth. Next, we have the Madison Station Historic Preservation Society with winners from the Twenty Twenty-two Madison Station Polar Express and Debbie Overkash.
Thank you. First, the historic society just wants to thank the city so much for partnering with us on this. I think it's a great partnership. We've had a huge time. The Christmas Tree Trail this year was sixty-eight trees strong and Greg Shaw will always be my hero for finding sixty-eight trees and bringing them down there. So, thanks to y'all. I want to thank you too for that beautiful Christmas tree, the New City Christmas tree is gorgeous. And this sixty-six-year-old body was not looking forward to climbing a ladder and decorating that tree again, so thank you so much for buying that. And the globe is huge. I mean, there are people down there all the time having their pictures taken in it, so y'all have done a great job bringing Christmas downtown and we just appreciate partnering with you. We also want to thank our other partners in addition to the city, the Madison Committee, the Madison Community Orchestra, the Rotary Club, the Madison Arts Council, who else?
Lowe's.
Lowe's, Lowe's, yes. So, we had some great commi- oh, and the library, and the library partnered with us, and the Chamber of Commerce. So, we really thank all of our partners. It was wonderful. And we had rave reviews. I got tons and tons of emails about the people and the families who were down there. And again, on the Christmas capers, y'all, that is growing by leaps and bounds. We had almost thirty-five hundred dollars in prizes this year donated by area businesses. We were so grateful to all of the businesses for doing that and Walt and Larry for throwing moon pies and burbs and... So, it is a huge success and it is growing and we really do appreciate the city's support of these great events, so thank you so much. But we do have some winners tonight and it's a call up your organization. The mayor is ready for...
Where's Cindy?
Cindy's going to take pictures. The Mayor's Choice Award goes to the Rocket City Curling Club. Do we have a representative? Thank you. Good job. Most creative goes to Filthy Gorgeous Unmain. And the last one, and y'all, I have never been a judge at this, but I have wanted these people to win since the very first time I was associated with the Polar Express. And I don't know that anyone's here tonight, from Madison Public Works for their honorable mention because their tree is always so dynamite, so...
Anyone here from Public Works? I'm their liaison.
Okay.
Wonderful.
They asked me to get it and give it to me.
Perfect.
We knew you'd take credit. Yeah, I don't have to hug so close.
Y'all, thank you again. I'm telling you Parks and Rec is, they're rock stars. They are absolute rock stars. Kelly is a superwoman and their department is a dream to work with and we really appreciate them. And then Public Works coming in and scooping it all up in the end, so y'all've got a great, great team in the city and we appreciate partnering with you. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you, Debbie.
Thank you for all your hard work. I know you put so much effort into it and just thank you for everything and everybody that's working with you.
Thank you. And our last presentation is Melanie Thornton with Madison Visionary Partners. Good evening, Council President Bartlett, Mayor Finley, and members of the city council. My name's Melanie Thornton and I'm the Executive Director for Madison Visionary Partners, or as we say, MVP for short. Thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. I wanted to talk just a little bit about what we have accomplished and some of our plans for twenty twenty-three. The annual appropriation that we receive from the City of Madison has allowed us to operate so we can focus on garnering philanthropic support for community projects. The generosity of this community has been amazing to witness. Many businesses, foundations, and private citizens have answered the call and made the commitment to make a positive impact here in Madison. In the last couple of years, MVP has fostered partnerships with government, business, and civic leaders to collaborate on projects such as the Kids Kingdom renovation and the Home Place Park Pavilion. As of today, we have garnered almost seven hundred thousand dollars in combined donations to those projects. This is a two-year return of investment of over seven hundred and fifty percent back to the City of Madison. When I started this position back in May, our Board of Directors and I said that twenty twenty-three was going to be a significant year of growth for our nonprofit. Looking at this year, we have several initiatives planned. We recently launched our first community mini grant cycle to local nonprofits who want to create Madison-based projects or events. We are hosting our first annual Madison Visionary Awards where we will honor the individuals who make Madison a great place to live, work, and play through volunteerism and philanthropy. We are also finalizing two partnerships through our fiscal sponsorship program. And just a side note about that fiscal sponsorship, that's an option that we make available to people, groups, and businesses who want to bring projects that need charitable funding without having to start their own nonprofit. Madison acts, MVP acts as the legal five oh one C three entity that provides that fiduciary oversight. And last and most importantly, we are in the final stages of planning a robust fundraising campaign for the Madison Community Center. Madison Visionary Partners is committed to fundraising for this project because we believe in it. We believe we have a unique opportunity to change the legacy of Three Springs by providing our residents with a state-of-the-art facility to gather, grow, and learn. We know that the community will embrace and will utilize this center once it is open. Madison Visionary Partners will continue to work enthusiastically to support our growing community. Our work in Madison comes at a pivotal time for growth for our region and for our city. We do, what we do every day matters to the overall fabric of Madison's future. We can advocate for resources for our city in ways that other organizations and our city government cannot because of our five oh one C three status as a community nonprofit. Our mission allows us to work with local corporate partners and individual community donors to contribute to projects like the upcoming Madison Community Center. We appreciate your work and look forward to continuing to work together to not only meet the needs of our community, but to surpass them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie, and thank you for your leadership. Now, we're at the point of agenda for public comments. All comments are limited to three minutes. As a reminder, please go to the podium and speak directly into the microphone so people at home can hear and closed captions will work. First, state your name and your council district or neighborhood. You no longer need to state your home address. Address your remarks to me as city council president. The council will not enter into dialogue at this time. This section of the agenda is for you, the public, to inform us, the city council, about your views. If you have questions, we will ask staff to address them at an appropriate time after the meeting. We've had one comment card turned in and that is from James Ross.
Good evening. James Ross, District One, and I'm here tonight as the co-chair of Madison First and Madison Forward. And I wanted to just give a quick update. I know that the council and Mayor Finley have been notified about the signatures, but I wanted to go ahead and to be transparent and put it out there in public that on the Fourth of January, Madison Forward submitted the signatures to the probate judge and they've got fifteen days to adjudicate the signatures and then we move forward in the process for the Madison City Governance Initiative to potentially bring a city manager in. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council?
Margie Daly from Carron's District. Things I respect: honesty, the U.S. and Alabama Constitution, the Bill of Rights, the State Public Purpose Doctrine, the Open Meetings Act. The OMA clearly states, "Public hearings equal hearings from the public." We have been denied the right to be heard on numerous large ordinances: the Closed Access Flyovers, the Bonds, Hexagon, and the Community Center. We wrote in emails to object and appeal. Legal notices were published, yet no public hearings. The basic civil right, freedom of speech, stifled, ignored, deleted from the agenda. Every one of you voted yes, possibly violating our civil rights, First Amendment right. People came to be heard, you ignored. For legal public record, we legally appeal the ordinance and resolutions without the public hearing that were legally noticed. We have appealed within the sixty-day limit. City manager petition spearheaded by Terry Johnson, state employee, bought a bed ten years and promoted to planning commissioner. Violated numerous state laws and openly publicly admits it. She collected signatures on school grounds, to council chambers, et cetera. This petition should be thrown out due to misconduct, fraudulent collection of signatures, state employee and political appointee. State law seventeen seventeen dash five, also state Title thirteen A and Federal Code Section ninety-four. Evidence: documentation, news articles, photos, social media posts, personal notes, council public comment videos. The same way you got the last two tax increases were achieved, kind of an inside thing and you got away with it. There's plenty of evidence on this. Fraudulent collection of signatures, infringement on speech, misinformation by allowing city manager and mayors of cities under an old law to make it appear like Madison would have similar insiders collecting signatures by outright lying. All to eliminate the executive branch of local government, usurp separation of powers, remove our right to vote on a person who runs our city. We need safer street lighting back, reflective paint striping on the roads, timely road repaired, proper no-kill animal shelter.
Ms. Daly, you're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Jennifer Coe, nine ten, Highland Drive, Ashley Estates, District Five. Council President, I have just learned that the Political Action Committee, Madison Forward, has turned in the petition to probate of Madison County to change the government of Madison. Why are a faction of appointed officials and ex-city officials trying to change the government of our city? Many of these people have a vested interest in changing our government to the council manager's style. Perhaps they feel that they would be better situated to continue receiving investments in their economic development projects. Perhaps the owners of trash pandas are stacking the odds in their favor that taxpayers will continue to subsidize town Madison and Toyota field renovations. After all, one of the stated reasons for changing our government was to establish a continuity of projects. So, how better to ensure that donors will continue to reap benefits of their system of patronage than to install a new government? Yes, it's almost like chartering a whole new city. The separation of powers with the mayor-council government will be violated by replacing it with essentially a board of directors style of management. This will consolidate power and add a layer of bureaucracy that stifles transparency. Perhaps taking or removing the public comment from public hearings is a step towards transitioning to council manager. Will this corporate board's style of government more reflect the nonprofits such as Madison Visionary Partners than a representative of the people? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and Finance Committee report.
All right, and the Finance Committee has reviewed the current bills and found everything to be in order. I do want to point out a couple of donations we'd like to thank Chairman Dale Strong for thirty thousand dollars for the life packs for the fire department, for Madison Volunteer Fire Department for donating a Chevy Tahoe, and for Chambers Bottling Company for a donation for the fire department also. And with that, I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And do we have, can we take all of the items on the consent agenda together?
I would like to take K separately.
Okay, we're going to remove K. Could we amend the motion to take all items except K and we'll vote on that separately?
Yes.
So, you're agreed to amend?
Yes.
You're agreed to second. All right, ready for a vote on all items on the consent agenda through J. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda passes except for item K, which we'll take separately. Resolution number twenty-two-two-dash-zero-four-zero-dash-R. Is there a motion or a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Calling for a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Nay.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Presentations and reports. Mayor Finley.
Okay, and I'll go back to the consent agenda real quickly with the appropriations that come, the outside appropriations for Madison Visionary Partners, Madison Chamber of Commerce, K-Tech, the Mass and Disability and Advocacy Board, and Huntsville Hospital Foundation. All of those come through our non-departmental appropriations, and each of those, unique in its own way, but some of the folks from Huntsville Hospital Foundation, that's a therapy dog, which I think is really neat for Madison Hospital, but also for our schools. Please bring it to the city at times, you know, even to a council meeting.
Please.
All of those, though, I just want to make sure we pointed those out. We'll continue that through the course of the next five to six meetings in bringing those and spotlight those. Not everyone will make a presentation, but each one of them is vitally important to our city. We did, as Jim Ross said, we were notified by Judge Barger that Madison Forward had brought the signatures directly to the probate judge, so the city does not have those. The judge will take full responsibility for validating those signatures, both in Madison County and Limestone County, and told me that he will get back to me once he knows that they are each and every, they are going through each and every signature and validating that. A couple of them, they can't read, they aren't validated if they can't read them, and he'll go through and continue on that. And I'd like to end by, I always compliment police and fire, but especially our Madison Police Department. Couple of weeks ago, they talked about some of the burglaries that were happening in some of the neighborhoods, and the frustration obviously we all have, have to take responsibility to lock your cars at night, please continue to do that. But they also wanted to make a focus on what they could do to stop that, and I'm pleased to say over a couple of nights ago, through good just follow-up and getting into those neighborhoods and knowing what they're looking for, made an arrest on folks that were breaking into cars. And, you know, it's a focus on that that makes our neighborhoods safe and why people, we won't take care of everything, but it's why our community continues to be strong is because our police and fire continue to do their job. With that said, that's all I have.
Thank you. District number one.
Yes, ma'am, I have a couple of things. I want to thank everyone who was involved with Hughes Road. It was an arduous experience, but it looks like everything has been restripped. I do have one request, if we could put reflectors out. I noticed that there weren't reflectors between the lines, so just wanted to make a note of that, and maybe you can let me know the status on that. And wanted to also announce that Ready Fest is back after a three-year hiatus due to the pandemic. We will have it February twenty-fifth. Details are to be announced later, but I did want you to put that in your calendar, and if you know of any businesses that would like to support Ready Fest. And for those not familiar, that's our emergency preparedness event that we have, so we have the search dogs there, we have our Madison Fire and Rescue, our police department, our EMA service. Everyone comes and just gives the public an opportunity to just learn what to do in an emergency situation. So again, that date is Saturday, February twenty-fifth. Look forward to seeing that back. Also want to announce that the Madison Library is having a book conference on Sunday, January twenty-second at one-thirty. If you're interested in either joining a book club or learning more about a book club, invite you to come to the Madison Library. And just like Mayor did, I want to end my thanks with thanking Public Works for our Snowmageddon event that we had at Christmas. I think it caught us by surprise a little bit. We didn't think that we were going to get the snow that we got, but Public Works leaped the opportunity and very quickly salted the roads and made preparations, and our communications team put out great communications on avoiding Eastview Road and other roads. So my thanks to them and everyone that was involved, Madison Police and Fire as well with that event and keeping our community safe. And that's all I have.
Thank you, District number two.
I would also like to thank Public Works for the great job they did clearing the roads and making sure that we were safe. Another thing I'd like to do is thank our first responders. Over the holidays, a lot of, they got a lot of calls from seniors. Seniors, they get fallen, they get busy, they're doing things, they're distracted. I had a family member fall, and I, the firefighters that came and helped her up were the most professional kind of people you would ever want to deal with your loved one. And it just made me proud to know that they were our firefighters that were there. But I'm confident regardless of which one of our first responders had been there, they would have acted in the same manner because we have the utmost professionals in our police, fire, and EMS service. I'm so thankful for them. That's all.
Thank you, District three.
No new business.
District four?
No new business.
District six.
I would just like to remind everybody that the Police Citizen Advisory Committee will be meeting on the twenty-fourth at the library, and it's going to be on the demonstrations of traffic stops. You know what to do, especially it might be handy for those that are just starting to drive, just to have a greater understanding of what's going on. And there are also vacancies on the advisory committee. If anybody is interested, please, please put in your application. Also, for McNAB, if you're interested in serving on the McNAB board, please also consider it and put in applications. We'd like to have more citizens involved in these different organizations. The things that are the, are the things that really make the city work, I mean, not to say that our city employees don't, but there's so much that extra does get done because of the volunteerism. And there's a lot of people that are talking that since COVID, volunteerism is just way down, and they've seen it in a lot of different things. So I just hope people look deep and say, hey, this is the way I can help my community and just be more involved. And I'd just like to thank also those that worked over the holidays, especially on Christmas and Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve and stuff. I just really appreciate your sacrifice and thank you for doing that, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, District seven.
No new business.
Okay, and I just have a couple of things. First, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so to our men and women in blue, we thank you and appreciate you. We're going to have a work session here in council chambers this Wednesday, January eleventh at five-thirty, and that's all I have. We have no board or committee appointments. Public hearings scheduled for this evening, so we will move to department reports, engineering.
All right. Good evening. First item I have is an annual report on the rebuild Alabama gas tax funds. I've got the slides here, I think, there we go. This is to fulfill the obligation for the allocation of these tax funds. And just to kind of go through this briefly, this isn't working. Turn it on, okay, good.
We're not going to make any engineer jokes at this time.
I'd help you, but I don't know how to do that.
I said, is it ready? And they said, yes. So I don't know. Okay. So this is the amounts that we collected for the various gas taxes for fiscal year You can see the different pots that money comes to, but our total collected for 2022 was one million eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars. That was the total collected amount back at the beginning of the year. We, I wasn't here, but a budget was developed for the, through the use of these funds, and a lot of this is done through engineering and also Public Works for various tasks, right away mowing, road repairs, signs, signals, streetlights. Those are the budgeted amounts that we had for those various activities. And then for the 2019 gas tax specifically, we used that for road resurfacing. In 2022, we completed a Bowers Road resurfacing project. We also did the Seager's Road resurfacing, which was actually for fiscal year 2021. We did that in 2022. For this coming year, we're looking at a section of Sullivan Road between Front Street and Mill Road. That will be our resurfacing project for this gas tax, that's what we're going to use it for. We're going to wait probably until the summertime to get that going. That'll be a pretty major hindrance to the school traffic since it's right there, so we'll probably do that project a little bit later on. But our budgeted total for fiscal year 2022 was one million six hundred forty thousand dollars. Any questions?
I got, I got one question, but I don't know if, it may be a Cameron question. So naturally, the gas tax comes from each gallon pumped, et cetera. Electric vehicles don't pay a gas tax. They pay a tag, a more expensive tag. Do you know if we get any of that funding?
I have no idea.
Okay.
We don't? I'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
And then the reflectors on Hughes, is that just coming later? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I'll get with, I'll get with Public Works and our department, see what it would take to add those.
It just really helps you.
Yeah, I don't know if it would fall into this necessarily, but yeah.
Any other questions on this report? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next I have Resolution number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-two-R, authorizing professional service agreement with Garver LLC for construction, engineering, and inspection services for repairs on Madison Boulevard bridges over Bradford Creek. This is joint replacement, bridge repair, and the amount of ninety-six thousand nine hundred ninety dollars to be paid from engineering department budget. That's a not-to-exceed amount.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second, any discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Next is Resolution number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-three-R, authorizing a renewal agreement with Esri Incorporated for software maintenance services, nine thousand fifty dollars to be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes, next.
Next is Resolution number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-four-R, authorizing an agreement with JW Kennedy Surveying Firm for additional survey and preparation of legal descriptions for project number twenty-two-two-oh-twenty-three. That's Gooch Lane Sidewalk Extension. That would be three thousand six hundred dollars to be paid from engineering department budget.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Where will that be? Where's it going to be extended?
It should be west of Waltrana on the north side of Gooch.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
Thank you for bringing that forward and getting that into this year. I know that'll be very nice to connect folks on the west side of Waltrana all the way over to Hughes to the multi-use path, as well as some folks from there can now probably walk to school.
Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Motion passes, next.
All right, next I've got proposed ordinance, twenty-two-three-zero-zero-seven, changing the name and designation of a public street from Halsey Road to Madison Branch Boulevard. This is first reading.
Okay, just first reading, and we'll take it at next meeting.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
And the reason why we're doing this, is it a request of the former owners of the land?
Yes.
Okay, just to be clear.
Request from them.
Yes. Okay, from? The Halsey family.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And finally, I have Resolution number twenty-two-three-oh-thirty-six-R. This is awarding the bid, number twenty-two-two-zero-one-two-ITB for Madison Boulevard Bridge Repairs to Miller &amp; Miller, and the amount of four hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars to be paid from engineering budget.
Move to approve. Okay, motion and second, any questions, discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legal has two proposed resolutions, I'm sorry, one proposed resolution and a proposed ordinance. The first one is Resolution number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-one-R. This is basically to correct a previous resolution that was submitted by Human Resources. Essentially what happened here was there was a change that was voted on November twenty-eighth. There was a change in the classifications for crime analyst, construction project manager, and facilities director. HR, when they presented that, they submitted it, it was reviewed by Legal, but it was later determined that they had left an erroneous, I'm sorry, what's the best way to put it, a resolution number that had been assigned to a previous matter, they'd used it as a template and never changed it to the new updated resolution number. So what we're doing here is we're just re-passing it once to avoid any confusion as far as that. It doesn't affect any of these jobs because none of these have been filled yet, so we're basically resubmitting this as Resolution number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-one to make changes to what was voted on as Resolution number twenty-two-dash-one-twenty-nine. This would void the old resolution, and then we would adopt a new resolution to clear up any, any sort of problems with that.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second, any questions? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes, next.
All right, next we have proposed ordinance number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-three-five. This is an amendment to a previous ordinance that was passed for the Cliff Farm Publix Annexation adopted by City Council on November fourteenth. What we had here was a situation where on November the fourteenth, council voted on annexation, and as an attachment, there was a pretty involved legal description describing all the properties to be annexed. This was a matter where there was a lot of traffic, where we were basically negotiating the legal descriptions, sharing them with our engineering, sharing them with council and other surveyors, and somewhere in that back and forth of the traffic, the actual version that was attached left out significant portions of the property to be annexed. So what we've done here is we have realizing that we need to, the Publix was properly annexed. It was some of the more common areas that were not properly identified in that legal description. So what we proposed is a new ordinance, number twenty-three-dash-zero-thirty-five, in order to repeal, replace, and to make it clear that all of these are being adopted at the same time. So this would be, basically the Publix was properly annexed, now we're basically bringing everything else that was intended to have been annexed by that error in cutting off a couple of pages of the legal description.
Move to approve.
Wait a minute, first, we have to move to suspend the rules?
Oh, okay.
We need us to do that before?
That was the second part I was going to say. I am asking for a motion to suspend the rules only so that we can have immediate consideration.
Okay, you can have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion, questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules passes. Now, do you want a motion for the proposed ordinance to replace?
Yes.
And repeal the previous ordinance?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any questions?
And just to clarify, this basically was like including the parking lot and...
What we had done originally was the ordinance intended to include the Publix and three other parcels, including the, the road.
Okay.
And we attached a legal description that we thought was all-inclusive, but unfortunately, it was merely the first page. What should have been four pages.
Okay.
So we had annexed the Publix and described it correctly as far as the Publix and the parking lot. However, it was one of the other parcels that was, two of them were actually left out. So we have to amend it in order to include those as well.
So those three parcels can be purchased by a developer? In other words, we can increase our business space?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. These were all owned by the, basic, different legal entities, but basically, the Breland-owned properties, they basically all petitioned for this annexation. At the same time, they were just simply not included in the legal description as intended.
The description does not contain property for further development. It's common areas like the corners.
Oh, okay.
From seventy-two, if you see that map.
And so that you know, basically, this is a little drainage area in front of the Chick-fil-A, for instance, is one of those.
Thank you. I was confused by the agenda packet. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. And planning.
Say it, Teddy.
My favorite person.
All right, this is actually the property y'all were just talk, talking about. So we are asking to approve Resolution twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-five-dash-four-R, and this is to set the public hearing on the zoning. Oftentimes, you'll see the annexation and the zoning coming together. In this case, we're just trailing the zoning, which is not a big deal. But those additional properties that we were just discussing are highlighted in yellow. Basically, this is a common area here, and this is a common area. They kinda serve as stormwater detention. They're not developable. And then, of course, this is the Publix, which is already, all this is annexed. So the zoning request is to zone these properties B3. On the streets, we wouldn't zone, but you can see they're outlined in dashed in red. They're already, that is part of the annexation. So we're asking you to set this public hearing for February thirteenth.
Okay, is there a motion, second?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion, second. Ready for a vote? Council, Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Everyone good? Happy New Year, everyone, and enjoy the game. We are adjourned.